If I could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. The first item on our agenda is to establish a quorum of our board team. All of our board teams here except for Ms. Mizelle Flint, and she's going to be here probably around 6:15. So that covers the fact that we have a quorum here. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Chris Sweet, the pastor at Grace Temple Ministries, and he's going to lead us in a word of prayer. Thank you so much for being here, Pastor.
Thank you for allowing me to be here and pray for you in this meeting tonight. Would you join me in prayer, please? Holy Father, God above all, we come to you because you are above all. We desperately need your wisdom and your discernment in all matters of this life. And so I just ask for that wisdom and discernment to be poured out into this room tonight in all matters that need to be decided concerning this district for the benefit of our children, for the resourcing and support of all the faculty and staff. And God, I just pray that we will see lives continue to be transformed, to be made ready for the life beyond the classroom, and God, that each student can become a contributing member of our society in a positive manner. God, we just thank you for your love for us, that you are mindful of every need, and so we again ask for your guidance in these matters. It's in the name of Jesus I pray, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Sweet. Our next item is our pledges. We're honored this evening to have some young students from Altaloma Elementary, and I'll introduce them as they come forward. So we have Lillian Mansabias, we have Aiden Prater, we have Star Ayala, and we have Isaiah Garza, all of which claim that they're very shy. So...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, don't run off. Don't run off, y'all. Stay there in case some of your parents would like to take pictures of you. Y'all, you can come real close if you'd like. We have a...Lillian's in the first grade, and I think Aiden's in the third, and Star and Isaiah are in the fourth grade, so they all are happy to be here. So we appreciate y'all coming. Thank y'all again. See, that wasn't that hard, was it? Thanks also for their parents, guardians, and everybody coming along. We appreciate y'all very much. I'm going to read a script that we normally have at our regular board meetings. Actually, we're reading it at all of our board meetings because this legislature changed how we do public comment this past legislative session. So I'm going to read that, and then we have a couple of things. I'm also going to read concerning some things that are going on that have happened recently in the district, and I wanted to read those as a statement from our board. So first of all, good evening and welcome. As the president of Board of Trustees, San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's evening meeting, our regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at this meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most if not, all the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team the opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda items should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. Also, our board secretary, Becky Hopkins, is going to pass around the list if anybody would like to sign up now. Don't let that limit your willingness or your ability to make comment at a later point in time. If you want to get up, just make sure that you sign up and then announce who you are when you get to the microphone. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will be part of San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain while others might be speaking. And I'll also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. One other thing, anyone wishing to speak on items not on our agenda this evening, please don't be offended if the board doesn't make any comments. Because it's not on our agenda, we can't make any anything, any reply other than to thank you for being here and to appreciate your interest in the district, and that we'll take your comments and make sure that those are addressed. But we can't address those because it's not an agenda item on our, at this particular meeting. So I hope that helps. So it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the students and the activity of our students and the business of our district. We're going to do two things, a little bit off the agenda. One is we're going to go ahead and approve the minutes. We're going to skip item four, and the reason why I'm skipping item four is because we want to make sure that we, as I make these comments to the public and to our public access channel, that all of our board team has seen those comments. It's a little bit frustrating when you do business in public. There's some rules about how you do that, and so we haven't met collectively since our meeting last week, and there's been some things that happened, some disciplinary things that have happened in our district since that particular timeframe, and we would rather all of our board team have that access to that information rather than us putting something out that all of our board team hadn't seen and hadn't approved of. So that's why we're going to wait for Amy just a little bit, and I'm going to take some pleasure as the board president to ask for approval of our minutes, which is item five, and then we're going to get our reports, which is item six. And when we get through with that, we're going to briefly go into closed session, hoping that Amy will be here, and then we'll review the comments that our administrative team that I've worked on today for us to make publicly, and then we'll be back out. So thanks, Mr. Dindell. So we have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes of our October 15, 2019, special finance and pre-agenda meeting and our October 21, 2019, regular board meeting. Is there any comments or questions or corrections that need to be made to our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. So that moves us to item six. Item six is our student enrollment report. The enrollment report that we have in our board book is from the 10th Monday of school, which was October the 28th. I think we've been running nearly all year somewhere between about 80 students and 100 students of where we were at the same time last year. So we certainly appreciate the public's confidence in us and entrusting us with their children. So we feel really good about our attendance. For those of you who might be new to the district or new to our meeting, the way states pay districts is based on how many students you have and how often they attend. So it's important that we have those students in class each day. Our next item is on the report section is item B, which is an academic progress report. We're honored this evening to have Cherie Braden, who's the Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, and also Candy Callis, who's the Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, and they're going to give us an update on some academic things that we're doing in the district. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Deathloff, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to be here. We would like to share a little bit about some of the work that we're doing in our district. In October, our curriculum and instruction team had the honor of presenting at the Texas ASCD Conference in Irving, and we shared the work that we're doing around growing empowered learners and helping our students take ownership of their learning. And our district mission, we talked about how everyone worked together to come up with this mission statement and how powerful the words are in this mission. When we trained our teachers around the mission of our district, we asked them to look for one word that really spoke to them, and in the training, every teacher had a different word that they said really meant something to them, which I think really shows the power in the mission statement of our district. We are working to engage every student. We want them to enjoy learning in the classroom. We want it to be relevant, inspiring, and we want it to be ready, have them ready to graduate. We want them to be future-ready. When you think about our mission statement, we also talked about the learner profile that we've developed as a district. In our learner profile, we're working really hard to help create students who are critical thinkers, who can think on their feet, who can collaborate and work with others, who are communicators, and who are also creators. So they're taking what they're learning, and they're able to create things with it. So we shared the work that we've done around our learner profile and how we're working with teachers to help design lessons that are creating students who can do these things so that when they go out into the future, they're employable, and people want to employ them because they're able to use those future-ready skills.
Thank you for allowing us to talk to you this evening. A lot of the work that we are doing in our curriculum and instruction department is driven by our work with our community-based accountability system. And so our elevator speech, which is here on the screen, is really and truly our guiding force for all of the decisions we make instructionally for students. So I'd like to take a second and just read it to you. "San Angelo ISD believes the time is now to fully value the hopes and dreams of each child, to remove whatever barriers exist in obtaining them, and to never again allow a child to be treated as a test score. We will be accountable for each child's future by honoring their strengths and supporting their needs while improving the system that empowers them." And that was created collectively by a team within the district, which I think makes it even more powerful as it's guiding our instructional decisions for children. We actually have a really great video that gives you an example of work that's being done on one of our campuses that focuses on empowering students and really using student voice as a means for teachers to make instructional decisions and help foster those relationships amongst peers on the campus as well as between teachers and students to really help them be future-ready.
At Lakeview High School, our mission is to work together to foster a community of pride that grows individuals of character for lifelong success. And part of that mission is building students of character. And so what we've done is started a student ambassador program. That ambassador program, those students are the face of Lakeview. They are the leaders anytime we need a student to showcase Lakeview and explain Lakeview and talk about the success that they're having. We have special guests that come to the campus all the time, and we call them out of class. They are our greeters. They introduce themselves. They talk a little bit about the school. They find out who the guest is, and they take them to their location on the campus and wish them well. They have that opportunity to just welcome people into the community. When people come in here, it's just that little nugget of something different that shows that we are a different school, we're a different community, and we're here to foster that community of pride. Another way that we utilize our student ambassadors is through student kivas. We have opportunities for teachers to sit around and ask questions, and we just get them to talk, and we listen to what they're saying. They know what they're going through, they know what their friends are going through, and they provide us with information to help us in their learning in the classrooms. Last year, our biggest focus on the student kiva was around lesson design. How do we design work to get the students engaged in the work and learn the things that they need to learn? This year, for our student kiva, we asked just about the environment. How are you feeling welcome? What are the things that we need to do to improve on our community, to make this school a better place, and to allow you as a student to feel more empowered in the work that you're doing? So throughout the year, we will ask the ambassadors to come back. We'll have a different focus, and we'll get some answers, and then adjust what we need to adjust and build those systems that we need to build to have the capacity to do the things and support those students that follow the mission that we have.
Being a student ambassador at Lakeview has given me the opportunity to participate in a student panel, which has been really cool to know that the teachers and administration, staff and faculty actually care about what we have to say and what our opinion is about what's going on in the school. And so for our voices to be heard is a really cool experience.
The best thing about our students in the student ambassador program is that they get to be individuals. They get to represent who they are, no matter what background they came from, no matter what ethnicity they are, what sex they are. They represent them, and they represent the community of Lakeview as a whole. And for them to be proud of who they are and proud of where they're from and eventually proud of where they're going, that's the whole purpose of why we do what we do.
So the work that Dr. Skelton is leading at Lakeview is just one example, but I think it's a great example of involving students in their education and helping them really take ownership, both academically and focusing on their whole well-being.
So next, you're going to see a little bit about Crockett Elementary. Clayton Hubbard is the principal at Crockett Elementary, and in this video, you're going to see at the elementary school how teachers are using the learner profile to drive their instruction, how they're helping students set goals for themselves, and using those goals to make action steps toward progress in the classroom.
My name's Clayton Hubbard. I'm the principal at Crockett Elementary here in San Angelo. This is my fourth year here, and I absolutely love this place. Just speaking about this year, main goal of ours is to really encompass the learner profile and get students ready for the future, even beyond the classroom. So one way we wanted to achieve that was empower students by allowing them to set goals and take part in the academic process. In order to allow kids to set goals, they needed to be informed of their academic capabilities by teachers, and teachers needed to be informed by data. And so we knew from the very beginning that we needed to develop a system for allowing teachers to become experts in student data, and then allowing students to become experts in their own data so they can make decisions about their future, and they can actually take part in that decision-making process. What are the action steps that I need to take as a student in order to grow academically over the course of a year? One way that we were able to build it into the school day was by introducing clubs for our students. Clubs expose the students to things that they would not have necessarily been exposed to in the classroom. They're able to take ownership in what club that they go to because we send out a survey at the beginning of the year and then again at semester, and they are able to decide what club they want to take part in. They include things like Theater Arts Club, Culinary Arts, STEM Club, Book Club, and Sports Club. While students are participating in clubs, that's a time where teachers, it's built in the school day, where teachers are without those students. The club sponsors have the students, and the teachers are able to come together and really dig into the data and become experts in our students' data so they can set goals for themselves and take ownership in their own learning. So the next piece to that and the final piece to it is the teachers' conference with students, and during those conferences, they show them the data. They talk with them about where they are individually, where they should be or where they could be. The students, a lot of times, are able to come to revelations about where they are and realize that they could be so much further along than maybe they're showing, than maybe the data's showing. And so they set goals for themselves even higher than maybe what the teachers would set for them. Maybe the most important part of the whole thing is that the student and the teacher together come up with an action plan in order to see what we can do to reach that goal. The main goal of this and what we hope to accomplish is to really empower students to become a part of their own educational experience, and we hope to motivate them in that way. We hope to gain curiosity within them. We hope to increase their wants and dreams for their own futures by letting them know, this is where you are, but this isn't, this doesn't have to be where you stay, and you're allowed to set goals for yourself. You're allowed to let the teacher know, this is where I want to be, and you're encouraged to go for those goals. And if you don't reach them, that's okay. We'll make another goal, and we'll keep trying.
Another great example of an elementary principal who's really helping students empower themselves to be the drivers of their learning, which is a part of our mission, to create future-ready learners. So really, this is the driving force of our curriculum and instruction work, and we wanted that to be the focus of our academic update this evening. Do you have any questions that you would like us to answer?
While we're thinking of questions, Dr. Deathloff has a comment.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. I just want to thank Candy Callis and Cherie Braden. For our audience member and constituents, you may remember Cherie Braden as the principal of Glenmore Elementary. Under her leadership, Glenmore was named one of the top seven elementary schools in the state of Texas with student achievement. So much academic success under her leadership. We're excited that Cherie's spent a couple of years in her current role as Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction. Also, we were extremely fortunate to snag Candy. She was the former Director of Curriculum Instruction in a large West Texas school district. So we were excited to grab her expertise and bring it into San Angelo as well. So highly successful individuals, and we're excited about not only what our learner profile does for us, but we're excited about the evidence of learning that we are asking our principals and teachers to provide through the course of the year. So through many formative assessments, we have our Measurement of Academic Progress, which is kind of a three-tiered assessment that happens multiple times a year. Our Next Steps to Guided Reading indicates the individual reading levels of students as they progress throughout the school year. So we've added many multiple measures, but we believe the key word is multiple. So we've added many multiple measures to ensure student success, and we're just excited about the work you guys are doing, and we're excited about our, really, our learner profile is the North Star. And it's not coincidental that those attributes are the same attributes that Fortune 500 companies are looking for, that our military is looking for, and that certainly higher ed is looking for as well. So thank you for your work, and we will all keep striving to ensure success for all kids.
Any questions? That was a great, great report. We appreciate that, and thank y'all for y'all's hard work.
Thank you.
We're moving along too quickly this evening. I'm still going to say four, and we're going to move to item seven, which is our consent items. So do we have a motion to approve consent items A through K?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve A through K. Item As to consider donations. We have a list of those who donated to our district on our overhead. Concho Valley Regional Advisory Council actually gave us about $17,000 worth of medical supplies, so we appreciate that contribution. Item Bs, consider the election of candidates to serve on the Board of Directors for the Tom Green County Appraisal District for 2020 and 2021. All the current members of the appraisal district agreed to serve again. So what the district has done historically and what we're, will be voting on tonight is that we divide our votes up equally among the five who are willing to serve on that board. Item Cs to ratify the administration's action in seller properties. These are not properties that the district owned. It's properties that are delinquent in taxes, that people, that the city's selling. So we're approving that in conjunction with the city or the county on the sale of those properties. Item D is to consider 2019, 2020 district and campus goals and objectives from our improvement plans. Item E is to consider the approval of targeted, our targeted improvement plan. These were presented to us by Mr. Underwood and Ms. Huddleston last week at our pre-agenda board meeting. Item Fs, consider network equipment for our one-to-one project, which we're looking forward to implementing beginning in August of 2020. Item G is to consider bid number 19-017. This is an annual bid for carpet and installation of that carpet. Item H is to consider bid number 19-018. This is a bid that allows us to purchase custodial supplies. Item I is to consider bid number 19-019. This is for the purchase of new vehicles. Item J is to consider RFQ 19-05. This is for some assistance and some equipment for our very successful first-year culinary arts department at Lakeview High School. And item K is to consider size waivers, class size waivers for 2019, 2020. So would we have any board members who would like to pull those?
Mr. President, I think, I just spoke to Dr. Bright, but I think item I has been, the administrator's recommendation has changed, so we may need to pull that for any discussions because I had...
Okay, let's do that. Jason, if you don't mind, we'll just wait till we approve the others, and then we'll ask you to come up and go through that. Thanks, Mr. Parker. Any others that we need to pull? Do we have a motion to approve yet?
I have a motion from Mr. Hernandez, but I didn't catch the second.
Okay. Second from Mr. Gallegos. So we have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment concerning any of our consent items? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Okay, Jason, if you don't mind, we're going to go to item J. I'm sorry, item I, which is to consider bid number 19-019, and this is a bid for new vehicles.
As part of our approved capital outlay plan, maintenance has requested a few, four new vehicles. This bid is to provide vendors for these vehicles. Maintenance requested four half-ton crew cab pickup trucks. A bid was prepared and submitted to local dealerships and out-of-town dealerships. We received four quality bids. After applying the scoring criteria, Jim Bass Ford of San Angelo was determined to offer the best value for the district. The administration recommends awarding the new vehicle purchases to Jim Bass Ford for a total cost of $105,248. Y'all have any questions over that?
Any questions from any members of our board team? If not, I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our bid number 19-019 for new vehicles. This is a budgeted item, and the administration's recommended that we award the new vehicle purchases to Jim Bass Ford in a total cost of $105,248. Any public comment concerning our motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Okay, we're going to go into executive session. We're going to do that under Texas government. We're really going to discuss two things while we're there. One is personnel matters. That's under Texas Government Code 551, Subchapters D and E. We're going to go under 551074, which allows us to discuss personnel matters, and then we're going to go under 551082, which allows us to discuss schoolchildren, district employees, disciplinary matters, or complaints alleged to the district. So we'll do that, and then I promise that we'll be out as quick as we can. So thank y'all. Okay, we discussed this earlier, and I'm going to make a couple of comments. First of all, it's always the board's, every intention that the board handle things that happen on our campuses as quickly and as efficiently as possible. The other thing that we are always mindful of... The other thing that we are always mindful of is confidentiality and how that affects anyone that might be involved, whether it's someone that might have initiated some type of activity on campus, or someone that might have been a victim of something that was initiated by someone else. So we always make sure that we do everything we can to protect the confidentiality that is expected from us as stewards of children. So let me read, I'm going to read first, we really had two incidents. One, it's been pretty well, anybody that's alive that has a pulse probably knows about it in San Angelo, has to do with an incident that occurred, a bullying situation. So I'm going to read that statement first. I encourage, we've got an opportunity for anyone to make comments. I said this earlier, not everybody might not have been here, but we cannot respond to any specific comment, but we encourage anyone willing to make comments. It feels strongly about making comments, so please do so. So I'll read this statement first, and this is from me as the board president representing our board team. Recently, our administrative team and the Board of Trustees received multiple reports regarding the safety of our students, bullying, and the security of our campuses. These reports predominantly concern our middle school campuses. In the climate caused by recent events in our district, state, and nation, we acknowledge our community's concerns. Based on our most recent security audit conducted in 2017, San Angelo ISD hired a Director for Safe Environment and Student Services, redesigned our Safety and Security Committee, and updated our emergency operations plans. We installed security vestibules and fencing at all elementary and middle school campuses in June of 2019. We hired a Director of Social and Emotional Learning to lead our efforts of supporting student behavior and learning. In addition, our district has implemented the following safety initiatives. And I should have said this initially, we did all of this proactively. We did this prior to us being aware of anything that might have happened in this weekend or late last week. These are the safety initiatives. We attended U.R.A.S.E. training. I need to attend some reading training. Unified Response to Active Shooter Training Events. We, all SAISD employees, substitutes, and student teachers received this training. We put lockdown buttons, automatic lockdown buttons have been installed in all elementary campuses. Threat Assessment Review Committee. Stakeholders that review and implement a system process designed to identify, to inquire, to assess, and to manage potentially dangerous or violent situations. We went to active shooter training. SAISD partnered with Angelo State University Police Department, San Angelo Police Department, and the Tom Green County Sheriff's Department to conduct an active shooter training exercise that actually took place on an SAISD facility. We've worked to improve enhanced communications. SAISD enhanced proactive communication with Stay Alert, A-L-E-R-T, and NEXAL system to allow reports, reporting of concerns and campus-specific alerts. SWIFT-K-12 Immediate Communication Alert System was launched in November. Updated district and campus websites, and we'll update campus, district and campus websites in 2020. So that's something we still have to do. Security systems. San Angelo Independent School District upgraded and added over 1,000 high-definition cameras and increased district-wide radio communication. We've also worked with mental health partnerships. SAISD's established community partnerships to support students and families with mental health needs. Campus personnel is receiving ongoing training in identification and support for students struggling with emotional problems. We've also increased partnership with local law enforcement during safety trainings. Those are the things that we did proactively, with the exception of what I mentioned with us working for a communication alert system. We listened to our community's concerns this week and some this weekend, and we respond to the recent events. We're taking the following additional steps. Our Director of Counseling and Director of Social and Emotional Learning are meeting with middle school principals this week. The Director of Safe Environments and Student Services will meet with middle school principals this week to review safety procedures. On Friday, the 22nd, November 22nd, middle school student groups will visit with campus principals and staff regarding school culture and school safety. On Monday, December 2nd, panorama climate surveys will be collected from students, staff, and parents, and they will be reviewed with all campus principals. The Director of Counseling will also communicate resources to help principals highlight character counts, traits, character counts, that's a program, traits listed on our SAISD learner profile. And as a board, we want to assure our community that the safety and well-being of each student in San Angelo is our highest priority, indeed, our highest priority. We will continue to listen to the needs of our constituents, and we welcome anyone that has comments concerning that, those events, to please feel free to come forward this evening. In addition, on Monday, this is a memo that was sent out today to parents and guardians of students at Lee Middle School. On November, on Monday, November 18th, 2019, administrators at Lee Middle School received information that a student allegedly had a handgun in their backpack. SAPD was contacted to assist in our investigation. No handgun was found, but the investigation is ongoing. San Angelo ISD thoroughly investigates every report that comes to our attention and applies discipline consequences in accordance with our Code of Conduct in the Texas Education Code, Chapter 37. We encourage everyone to report threats of any kind to a district or school official, to local law enforcement, or to report that concern on our district's Stay Alert link on SAISD's website. Student reports will always be kept confidential. SAISD is committed to providing a safe learning environment for all students and staff. So those are our comments concerning a couple of instances that have happened in the last week. And I know I speak on behalf of our entire board team. It's personally nauseating for us and incredibly frustrating that there are circumstances that happen that take students away from the classroom, and especially when students are targeted in this type of method. We're also, as you've seen by trainings and things that have taken place, we've done a lot of things this year. We'll continue to do as much as we can in the future to make sure that we have the safest environment for our students. So with that being said, I'm going to go to Section Four of our agenda, which we skipped, which allows public to make comments on items not on our agenda. I appreciate everyone's patience in waiting, so we could review this statement with Ms. Mizell Flint before we made any comments publicly. So if anyone wants to make comments, I think Becky has a list. You might, just, I'll come get that. And I failed to thank everyone for their patience, so I do appreciate everyone being patient. I can't read writing. Jane Joseph?
Anne.
Anne, okay. Anne Joseph is here, and she would like to speak about a couple of things, adding some aids to our classrooms and also cellphone use in our high schools. And I visited with Ms. Joseph before our meeting, and she said that she worked really hard, and she's going to talk as fast as she can to get through in five minutes. And I told her that we would allow her some extra time this evening. So thanks for being here, and we'll look forward to your comments.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Anne Joseph, and I am currently working as a substitute teacher in the San Angelo Independent School District. I wish to present three concerns. The first concern is the fact that cellphone use by our high school students consistently proves to be a major disruption to the students' focus on school studies. It disrupts the potential for learning, not just for those who are texting or playing games on their phones during class, but it also adversely affects the opportunity for others to maximize on learning in the classroom. It taxes the teachers with having to address the problem of cellphone use by students during class, when the teacher should actually be free to teach and should not be placed in a situation where they need to police students over in-class cellphone use. I ask that the school board would mandate the requirement that any cellphone brought onto campus by a student must be turned off during school hours, and that the dress code would forbid the wearing of smartwatches or any similar electronic device. I have had students get up in the middle of a class, walk over to their device, which is plugged into a wall outlet because it needs to be charged, and then proceed to text claiming that they just received a text from their mother, and they have to reply to it. I have seen high school students look at the assignment handed out to them by a male substitute teacher and then simply ignore the assignment while they pull out their phones and proceed to text, take selfies, or play video games. And it's not just a problem for substitute teachers. I have seen full-time male teachers and female teachers direct a high school student to put the cellphone away, only to have the student in question pretend to put the phone away and then pull it back out when the teacher is not looking. It can make for an uphill battle, which, from my own experience, can end with a student being suspended because they became so intolerably defiant and rude, while other students resent that the substitute did not let everyone get away with sloughing off their classroom assignments. Another cause for concern, I think, about the use of cellphones by students during school hours is the fact that there are a noticeable number of students who use their phones while on campus to play violent video games, such as first-person shooter games. Besides the obvious fact that that kind of game should not be allowed in a school environment, playing violent video games is not going to put the student into a mindset conducive to learning in a classroom environment. It can be difficult to go against a group of high school kids who are acting like bullies when they are confronted about something that they should not be doing. It is my thinking that by not laying down a school district-wide policy which forbids the use of cellphones by students on campus during school hours, you are failing to arm the teachers with a policy backup, which can then be used by them when taking a stand against students who lack the discipline to use phones only between classes. My hope is that you would see fit to begin the new year with implementation of a shift in policy governing on-campus student use of cellphones, smartwatches, and similar devices. The second item of concern causes me to ask, are we in the school district doing enough to encourage students to consider and pursue formal vocational training as a viable option for themselves after graduating from high school? I hear and see students receiving focused support and encouragement to pursue a college education, but I do not hear and see the same degree of support for equally viable life choices, which would involve training in a vocational school. This concerns me because college is not the only intelligent option for students graduating from high school, and if we do not actively and energetically present and support at least both options to high school students, then we may well be shortchanging them in a way that could have negative lifelong implications. Just because college is a good option for many does not mean that it is a good option for all. The third concern I want to address is because I think there is a real need for teachers of students from third grade through seventh grade to have either a co-teacher or a permanently assigned aide. This staffing addition would give teachers the backup which they need, in my opinion, to be able to adequately address and handle what seems to me to be an abundance of behavioral issues in the classroom, while also meeting the need to educate the students which they are there to teach. As a substitute teacher, I repeatedly see students who need special focused help, but with only one teacher in the classroom, it's not going to happen without taking the teacher away from properly supervising and teaching the other students. So what happens? Either that child that needs the help and special attention doesn't get it, or the rest of the class loses out on periods of quality instruction. We have students in elementary school and middle school who have parents in jail, parents who are facing a terminal illness, and parents who are not nurturing their children properly, or who took drugs while pregnant. All of those circumstances create challenges for those children, challenges which need to be properly and timely dealt with, challenges which could be best addressed with two educators in each classroom for grades three through seven. The burden of disruptive and troubled children in the classroom limits the ability of a single teacher to successfully teach. And then, when children do not perform well on annual testing, is it any wonder? Finally, beyond the consideration of what the students might need, consider the toll that the disruptive and troubled students take on your teachers who do not have a permanent backup in the classroom. I have substituted in classes where I would liken the experience to having been in a battle zone, and it is after such a day that I am amazed that you actually have teachers who reach the age of retirement. I am a firm believer that every battle can be won. The only question here is, who will win? The battle here is to educate the minds of all of our children in public school, and you are the generals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Thank you for serving as a substitute, and thank you for your comments this evening. Our next person who signed up is Jamie Munoz, and she would like to speak about bullying concerns. Thank you, Ms. Munoz.
Thank you guys for having me. So I know five minutes is not quite enough, but I'll make it quick. So I heard you guys address the recent videos that were circulating. I personally, the reason why I'm here today is to request that you would consider adding to the policy more parental accountability. I feel that parental accountability would solve so many of these problems. The question isn't to add more cameras, it's not to add more security officers, it's for our parents to be more involved in their children's behavior, not just at school, but not just at home, but at school, also on social media. And I feel like this is, it's just an issue that's, it's just getting worse, it's worsening with every year. I also feel that parental accountability would also help with this lady's request for the cellphones. You know, if parents were also being held accountable for those things, then they would be more involved in making sure that their children don't have their cellphones, that they're behaving at school, that they're, you know, reaching out to the proper resources for their troubled kids who are lashing out physically and verbally. And, you know, my daughter was a part of a group that was victimized on the first day of school, the first day on the school bus, a child threatened to slit their throats. And my concern is that, not just for the children who are being threatened or being assaulted, but also for the children that are doing this, what causes a child to get to this place, to harbor so much anger, to harbor so much hate, aggression, that they have to lash out to their fellow classmates? What is really going on with our children? And I feel like that's a question that's not really being answered. Our parents are not being held accountable for their children, and that is what I'm hoping that you will all consider. Our teachers do not get paid enough to teach our children and parent them and raise them and make them behave themselves, like she previously mentioned. There's one teacher to 30 children, you know, and they're there to teach our kids, to give them the proper tools, to learn their academics, to learn their classes, and to hopefully become, you know, well-equipped by the time they graduate to go to vocational school or go to college. It is our job to raise kind-hearted human beings who care about others, who care about the well-being of others, who don't just stand around with their cellphone, recording while a child is getting punched in the face or getting pushed up against the wall. That's not okay. Where is our parental accountability? And so that is why I'm here today, because I am so grateful for our educators. I'm grateful for the way that Glen Middle School handled our situation on the first day of school. And I am confident that we may have really well things in place, but if our parents aren't stepping up to help on their end, I don't feel that this is going to get any better. So that's my petition to you guys. I know that this school year is halfway through, but I'm hoping that you will consider adding some, maybe, policy for more parental accountability in the next school year and the ones to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz, and thank you for your patience while we were in executive session. I have one other person signed up to speak, and that's Sarah Beard, I think. Sharon, I'm sorry. So Ms. Beard, if you would come forward. She has the same topic. She'd like to speak about bullying concerns as well. Thank you for being here.
Having a... First, I'd like to say I wish I was near as prepared as Anne. And I believe both of them made such great points. I'm going to try to keep it brief. I'm going to try to keep it brief, I tried to type something out so I didn't get off subject or take up too much of your time. First, I want to say bullying is never okay. Retaliation is never okay. The insecurities, depression, and changes that bullying causes in our children is not acceptable and never should be tolerated, ignored, downplayed, or swept under the rug. All of our children matter, and school being where they spend the most of their time, they need to be protected and feel safe in order to learn to the best of their abilities and continue to grow. I also think it is important to bring to you guys the attention of the anti-bullying policy and lack of any real direction that I've seen when I've read over it. I believe that something you guys need to take under consideration to be reviewed. I think that it should be more in-depth, and parent accountability should definitely be added in there. I think that our teachers have so much weight on their shoulders that when these issues happen, half the time they don't know how to deal with it, and they don't feel that they have the support that they should either. Moving on, I think it needs to be addressed how difficult it is to make contact with the SISA/ISAISD administration. After the incident happened with my son at Lincoln, I was given several assurances by Mr. Padilla and Mr. Gandar that were never followed through on, so I felt I needed to take it above. I made several attempts to make contact with the Administration Department, and on more than one occasion, I left messages for the Superintendent, Mr. Detloff, with no response. It took my daughter taking the issue to social media for anyone to reach out to me. It should never take such extreme measures. My son's pictures should never have had to go on social media for me to get this issue to move forward and for things to change. My prayer is that you guys will take this under advisement and make changes that will benefit our children, all of our children, as well as the teachers who support them on a daily basis. If they don't have the Administration and School Board to rely on, who do they have? How can these teachers help us grow, and how are things going to change? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. I appreciate those comments, and we appreciate your patience as well. Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone wishing to speak on items not on our agenda that didn't sign up? Okay? Feel free to come forward, tell us who you are, please.
I'm Susie Smith, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak tonight. I guess it was Sharon's child, I'm not sure, that I saw the picture on the Facebook and with the gash under the eye and the report that the child had been slammed up against the wall, and the frustration with the lack of follow-up, because I understand that happened October the 24th or somewhere like that, and I'm thinking, and nothing has been done about it, so that was my concern. And so I'm glad to know that you all took the initiative tonight to address this and that some of the cases have been dealt with or in process of being dealt with, but it's just very concerning that this mother who just spoke would feel that her needs are not being addressed with her child. And so I'm here in support of her and any other child. I know one of our grandchildren has experienced some bullying to some degree, evidently not to a physical, but to the point that he had to go to two different schools here in San Angelo and finally ended up out at Cristoville, where he's doing very well, and I'm very thankful for that. So it's very personal to me with the bullying situation, and I don't know what initiated it, what the situation was, but it just is unfortunate that any child would be undergoing this kind of treatment and not have the parent feel that their child is important enough for anybody to address their situation. And so, I'm representing several people who, we've talked about it, and would have been here tonight, there's so many different meetings going on. But anyway, thank you for your time, and together we'll work and we'll get this situation taken care of, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for those comments, and anyone else wishing to come forward? I'll make one final comment, and I think that was clear, and I mean, this is an emotional issue for all of us, and I don't know of a better board team. Certainly, I've mentioned this probably hundreds of times in my 19 years on this board that cares more about our kids. And we, I mean, it's abhorrent for us to have to go through this, and we apologize for anything that, for any appearance that you might have about how we care about kids, because I know everybody on our board team is passionate about kids, they wouldn't be here. So, we, and to Ms. Smith's comments, we know what bullying is. Bullying's not about just beating somebody up, it can be verbal, it can be any other type of bullying, and our policy's designed to deal with all of that, and we, as a district, will move forward and be better because of these events, I'm convinced of that. So, let's move forward on our agenda, if we don't have any further board comment. And again, I appreciate everyone being here this evening. Let's move forward to eight. Consider bills and accounts and financial statements for October of 2019. We have a motion from Mr. Dendel and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of October 2019. Do we have any board comment or questions?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to those watching on Channel 4, this board meeting, all these reports are reviewed in a pre-agenda meeting in depth, and all of the financial transactions of the district can be found on the SAISD website or the district tab in another heading called Financial Transparency.
Thanks, Mr. Dendel. Do we have any other comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor of a motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider an energy savings contract with Synergistics. Dr. Bright's going to lead us through this, hopefully for the final time. Dr. Bright?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I've got some guests in the audience, want to say welcome to. We have several representatives from Synergistic here, Robert, and Steve, and David, and John that came to see the show tonight, so we welcome them. Go ahead and start here, say, the five-year cost savings energy management contract with Synergistic is set to expire at the end of this month, and we've been working, or we've been actually, we've known that this day, when this day come, we were going to either entertain an extension or renewal offer, or we're going to thank each other for the great work we've had over the past five years and bring the energy management program in-house. We knew those were our two options. We've discussed this before, that negotiations regarding extending the contract actually began last January, and they continued off and on through July. And then, as September came around, you know, we really weren't that thrilled about the terms and the pricing that had gone on. We started making preparations to bring the program in-house. Mr. Creek started trying to organize his staff, and he started writing job descriptions for our energy specialists, and we were thoroughly prepared to bring it in-house when Dr. Randy Hoff of Synergistic stepped up and asked us if he could make one final pitch to keep Synergistic in the contract. And he pretty much said, what would it take for us to consider an extension? And we shot straight with him. We gave him a list of items that we didn't like in the previous offers, and here were some things that we'd like to see in a new offer. And he said, well, I'll get back to you. Literally, we were days away from posting the jobs, and Dr. Hoff called back and said, I have an offer, I think I can meet every one of the demands you asked for. And he shot it to us. And Mr. Creek and I looked at it, we went and saw Dr. Detloff and said, this is too hard to turn away from right now. And we discussed it some more. Let me fast-forward a little bit. Y'all know that Dr. Hoff came and made a presentation to the board at October's pre-agenda meeting. And then at the regular meeting in October, Mr. Creek and I came and did another presentation for you, added some more information. And at that point, the board had us go back and dig a little deeper, do some more research, have the contract thoroughly reviewed by our attorney, and come back to you at November's pre-agenda. We took your advice and we went and did that. At last week's pre-agenda meeting, we told you that we contracted 25 districts that are either current or former Synergistic clients. We explained to you that making apples-to-apples comparisons to us and them are very difficult because it appeared that Synergistic sort of, what's the word, customizes contracts to best meets the needs of other districts and Synergistic. But based on our interviews with all of these people, there were some common themes and some learning that came to light. First off, whether, no matter who we spoke with, whether they were currently in contract, they were in a renewal, or they chose not to extend, not one person said anything negative about Synergistic and their relationship and the work that they do. Some of the reasons people did not extend contracts, it could have been that they didn't have any budget money to do it, they thought they could save money by doing it in-house, or there was one district that had a change in leadership that said, we're getting rid of every contract we've ever had and starting from scratch. So there were just various reasons why people chose not to. But again, I will reinforce that no one had a bad thing to say about Synergistic and the work they did. We learned another thing. The energy specialists are the key to success, and we know very well that we have two outstanding energy specialists in our district, former school administrators and former SAISD employees. And we've also heard from other districts that those make very good energy specialists when you bring it in-house. Third thing, we found out that support at the top is critical. First, from the board, by setting policy, and we have an energy policy, we said it about five years ago, and support from the Superintendent and central office staff is critical by promoting the program and making it a priority. Those are keys to success. And then finally, one of the things we found out was that the Synergistic support structure behind the energy specialist has an almost incalculable, that's a big word for an old coach, value. It's hard to put a price tag on the support structure that runs behind Synergistic, whether it's engineers helping you design things or doing data digs, analyzing our usage, those type of things that are going on in the background, it's hard to put a price tag on those. So, let me fast-forward again. Right now, we think the pricing is reasonable and fair that they've offered on a new 33-month fixed-cost contract that we've discussed last week quite a bit of time. We know that the terms are good. Upon completion of the contract, the district may either continue with one-year extensions at the current offered price, or we can bring the program back in-house and keep the two Synergistic-trained energy specialists that are either onboard, and we talked a little bit before the meeting, that if they're not, if we don't have one onboard, they would help bring one to us that is synergistically trained. And we have put the contract through three attorney reviews, and at this point, all the parties are at least satisfied with the document that's in your board packet. And so with that, I'm going to leave it back to you. If you want to add anything or move on, our board, our administrative staff recommends accepting the extension offer, 33-month fixed price that is in the board packet, and we appreciate a motion.
Thanks, Dr. Bright. Any questions or comments prior to someone making a motion? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion, and I appreciate all the information that you've gathered over the past month or so, and I would ask you, that last part, because I was out in the hallway, if you'll get some email confirmation of that, so we have some historical data once you're gone, and maybe I'm going to be gone, that something we'd have to rely upon, that we will have some Synergistic specialists that we'll be able to employ. And I will also say to our department that'll be handling this after the 33 months, that this is our 33 months to get prepared for this now, so that we can do this once Synergistic leaves. Okay? With that in mind, I will make a motion that we approve Administration's recommendation to enter into a 33-month contract with Synergistic to provide an energy management program for the district as outlined in the attached contract that we've all been given a copy of.
Second? So thanks. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the district's recommendation of a 33-month contract with Synergistic. Any further comment or questions from our board team?
I just want to tell Jeff, thank you, and for your staff, for all you did, and answering all the questions we had, and, you know, we've been discussing this for a while already, but really, thank you for digging into what we asked you to dig into and bringing us back the answers.
David Creek researched this part.
And David, as well. I forgot about you, David, back there. Thank you, David.
He was the key vote, and he had the veto power as well, so he took this on.
So tell David to make a note that it's really cold in here right now. So we could certainly save some money based on how cold it is. Any other board comment or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and do we have any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Dr. Bright, and thanks, our Synergistics team. We're looking forward to continuing our current relationship. Our next item is item 10, consider annual Title III program evaluation. It looks like Shelley's going to do that for us.
Yes, sir. And Mrs. Free had to leave, so I'm going to present her report. Good evening, Dr. Detloff, President Lehman, and School Board. Each year, the district completes the program evaluation for English learners. The evaluation has been submitted to TEA. I would like to provide a few positive nuggets that we found when conducting this evaluation. There is a significant growth in student scores in the TELPASS assessment, and TELPASS is an acronym for Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System. We have a higher number of students that scored advanced high than in the past. This indicator reveals that students are progressing through the English language at higher levels. Through a collaborative effort through San Angelo ISD and Region 15 Center, we have seen an increase in the number of ESL teachers receiving their endorsements. From August through October, the district has had 23 teachers receive their ESL endorsement. In order to meet the needs of our EL learners, the Director of English Learners has met with each campus administrator to complete an evidence review and data dig on their current EL students. This action has provided a clear understanding of the needs and impact of the EL learners on their campus. We are very excited about the growth and focus the district provides for our EL learners and anticipate seeing continued growth. Thank you for providing the opportunity for me to share the positive impact we are having on our English learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hullethand. Any questions or comments concerning Shelley's report? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval of the 2017-2018 Annual Title III Evaluation. Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dendel and a second from Mr. Parker. Any board comments or questions? Any public, any public comment concerning our annual Title III program evaluation? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item's item 11, consider the approval of purchase of child nutrition software, and Ms. Helms is going to help us with that. Thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Detloff. Thank you for having us. And we'd like to recommend the purchase of new software and plan to keep it at least till I'm retired, because this is not going to be a real fun process, but it is a needed process to improve. The software I'm recommending would give our parents an app for their phones in addition to some other functions that we don't have right now, quicker reporting, real-time data. Sometimes we don't have real-time data available as much as we would like. It would also offer our students a way to get through the line a little faster. I've talked with one of our principals about maybe trying that new, a new way of doing business, so to speak. And so it would offer a number of advantages to our district. All four of these companies are on, considered, whether with purchasing cooperatives, so the purchasing piece has been met with your approval. And then we also selected a company out of Houston. One of their customers is HISD. They also have the state of Alaska, the state of West Virginia, and some modules in Texas. Is there, are there any additional questions?
Thank you. We appreciate that. Questions for, yes, go ahead.
I have a question. So would this include or replace the MySchoolBucks? Where the parents pay? Does that have a portal for that, too?
Yes, it does. It's called School Cafe. Yes. It would replace that. And so we know we have a lot of work to get that out to parents and assure them that whatever funds are in that system would be transferred to the new system, and then getting the information about setting up an account in that system.
And I'm sorry, with that new system, would it automatically show when students pay? Because I know that sometimes that's an issue, where it doesn't show right away.
Yes, it should show us in more real time.
Thank you so much.
Good questions, Amy. Thank, other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the purchase of the software.
Second.
So we have a motion from Ms. Mizell Fland and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve new software for our child nutrition department. Question, this is, says it's budgeted, so we were planning on replacing it. We just didn't know what we were going to replace it with.
And we do not have an exact date rollout, and let me explain why. So we need to work, because our piece of the puzzle touches both data services and technology, so there's a lot of coordination, and that's why I don't want to be real firm on a date. We would like to get it out sometime in the spring, but we don't want to interfere with any testing or anything that causes anyone anxiety. So once we received your approval tonight, then we'll start meeting with those other groups and coordinating all the activities that need to take place. An interesting note was, we found Spring ISD in the Houston area has the same student data system that we do, as well as this software. So we've already asked them some questions, and we feel like they'll help us make a smooth transition.
That's good. Best practices. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment concerning our motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 12, consider purchase of trip buses. Our Director of Transportation, Jason Ketchum, is here. We had a pretty detailed discussion about this at our pre-agenda, but I'll let you wrap it up for us.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Detloff, thank you for having me here again. My recommendation is to purchase four trip buses, but just as a recap, we currently have eight Van Hool buses. They range in the years from 2003 to 2009. So even our newest one is over 10 years old. There is only one manufacturer in the U.S. that we can get parts, we can get buy parts from. So parts are expensive, and they're hard to come by. Since July of this year, we have had, at least, or we've had nine times where our Van Hools have broken down on the road with passengers in them. We have also spent $42,000 just since July as well on the maintenance of these Van Hool buses. So buying new buses will save the district money in the long run and also improve the safety of our students. We have received a quote from National Bus Sales, who is a member of the inter-local purchasing system. And so our recommendation is to purchase four new trip buses.
Okay, thank you for that recap. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion from anyone, anyone would like to make that motion? Yes, Dr. Detloff, anyone wants to make a comment before?
Mr. Ketchum, I want to thank you for your work on this. I know that you've explored many opportunities with different entities to look for the best deal around our area and throughout Texas. So I appreciate that. Also, would you comment again on the accessibility of, I guess, maintenance and repairing these engines, because they're diesel engines, which is different than our current fleet, charter fleet?
Yes, sir. The, if we're purchasing these new buses, one, it will allow us to work on it in-house. But if we do have to take it to a dealership, I mean, we can take it anywhere. We can take, there's a dealership here in San Angelo that we can actually take the buses to. Currently, with our current Van Hools, if they break down and we cannot do the repairs ourselves, we have to send them to Fort Worth. So in all of Texas, there's one place we can, we can take them, currently take them to. We, as far as parts go, we can go down to O'Reilly's, we can go down to any auto parts store and buy parts for these new buses. They're going to be real common with what our school bus, the parts that go into our school bus fleet anyway. So our mechanics are going to be, not only are the parts, it's going to be more accessible, but our mechanics themselves are going to be more comfortable working on these buses, because it's more, they're already doing it to a certain extent. They're already working on the same Cummins engine, the same Cummins engine that these new buses come in. Our mechanics are already working on right now in our yellow buses. The same Allison transmission that these trip buses will have, our mechanics are currently working on them in our yellow school buses. So it's definitely going to be a lot easier and a lot more cost-effective process.
Thank you. I also appreciate you bringing a vehicle of this fleet to San Angelo for the review from our fine arts directors, choir band. We extended invitations to really all of our UIL sports, as well as fine arts, to the individuals that utilize this vehicle. So they were excited about the possibilities, the safety, and as you mentioned, the number of breakdowns we've previously had with our really antiquated fleet. So thank you for updating these vehicles and making a recommendation to keep our students safe.
And I think you mentioned to us that there's other West Texas schools or other school districts that you've checked on that have these new buses that you've, that are happy with them.
Yes, sir. Just right down the road, Certain City has bought, they have bought one of these buses. Andrews has bought them. I know Midland has bought five of these, and I think they're scheduled to buy four to seven more of them. So yes, they are, we do have neighbors that are currently using them and happy with them.
Some of our viewers may not know that, I think we mentioned it last week, that San Angelo and Amarillo, we may travel more miles than any school district in the state of Texas, maybe a million miles a year. And I know a lot of that is travel that is for extracurricular activities, which these buses will be used for. Several of our board members saw these buses when we were at the State School Board Convention in Dallas, and we brought it to our administration's attention, that this is something we needed to look into. And I'm happy that we have, and I'm happy we've had, that you brought this proposal to us. So I will make a motion that we approve administration's recommendation to buy four ultra-coach liner buses from National Bus Sales to be used as trip buses.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Dr. Kingman. I would add one comment, and that's, we discussed this in length last week, too, that's, previously we didn't have very many options. We were always forced to buy Van Hools, and we couldn't buy new Van Hools because of limits that the TEA has on what you can spend on buses. So this is a new option. So anybody that might be critical of us driving buses that were 15 years old, a lot of it had to do with availability and things like that. So we've been offered this option, and I'm excited that we're being able to take advantage of that this evening. So do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item, I don't know why you always end up last on this deal. You travel here and go home. Jason, you're going to have to move them up on the agenda. I think Jason's mad at you or something.
They don't mind waiting.
So it's item 13, consider district-wide LED retrofit.
Thank you for having me here tonight. During the 1819 school year, the Business Support Services team began exploring the options of retrofitting our current lighting with LED. A recommendation was presented, and E3 was hired to complete a facility assessment for LED lighting and to provide pricing for this project. E3 has finished their initial walk of all district facilities. This includes the inside and the outside of all educational facilities, stadiums, auxiliary departments, and parking lots. An executive summary prepared by E3 is attached. This summary gives a total breakdown of campuses, by campus, of fixtures and total costs. The summary also includes an alternate. Alternate one is to retrofit all district-owned Head Start campuses. This was discussed at our meeting last week, and one of the developments is that Dr. Bright did reach out to COG to ask them if they would be willing to assist in paying for that. And they have said that they tentatively would be willing to pay for that, but their board meeting isn't until December, so they won't be able to 100% say yes, they can do that until December. The administration recommends accepting the pricing for interior and exterior lighting at all campuses and departments for $2,809,005, and consider alternate number one, or $149,005. Do y'all have any questions over any of that?
Thanks, Jason. Questions from our board team?
Only that, again, we've been discussing this for a while, but there was mention that there's going to be, we expect to have significant savings, I think utility savings on the cost of the lighting that, I don't know whether it'll fully pay for this over time, but it will, it is going to save us not only having a better lighting for our students and our staff, but it will save a lot in our electrical bills over time.
Our projected energy savings is $320,000 annually.
Thanks, Mr. Parker. Any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll do a motion to approve the LED retrofit district-wide with alternate one. Second.
Thanks. We have a motion from Dr. Kingman, a second from Mr. Dindl. That guy, I need to look at his name tag. We've only been together a while. Yeah, and I'm excited that we're able to add the alternate to this as well. This is, the total amount of this work is $2,958, $958.10. So, and I also want to thank E3. I think they've been great to work with, and we appreciate all y'all's help, and we look forward to having all of our facilities retrofitted. Other comments or questions? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Jason, for bringing that to us, and thanks to our friends at E3 for their promptness in getting all this done. I think that concludes. Oh, sorry. Consider RFQ number 19-04 for Lincoln Middle School track. Mr. Henry.
In the original construction of Lincoln Middle School, a track was not included. During the budgeting process, the board identified five projects to be pursued during the 1920 school year. Lincoln Middle School track was one of them. This track would serve students, staff, and the community in various athletic operations. Requests for quotes were sent to eight vendors, three submitted pricing, and one submitted a no bid. A committee was assembled, and the responses were scored. Hellis Construction received the highest score, their price of $719,785, includes the construction of the track and all equipment for the track program, as indicated in the attached recap. The district committed $550,000 towards the project, with the remaining coming out of unassigned fund balance. The administration recommends contracting with Hellis Construction for the construction of a four-lane track at Lincoln Middle School for $719,785, which includes a $20,000 contingency. Additional costs will include project management, SKG.
Thanks, Jason. Questions, comments? I'll make a motion that we approve the administration's recommendation for contracting with Hellis Construction for the construction of a four-lane track at Lincoln Middle School in the amount of $719,785. And this includes a $20,000 contingency. There will be some additional cost due to project management. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Dindl. So we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, a second from Mr. Dindl.
Just a quick question. When was the estimated, we would actually do the work for this track?
We're going to have, we're shooting to have it completed by August 1st.
Thanks. Good question, Dr. Kingman. Other questions?
Just one comment. It's a welcome sight at Lincoln Middle School. Like I said, we've said this, we've had discussion over this several months, but, you know, those kids will stop walking now to practice at, what, Lakeview High School where we were? So they will now have a track at Lincoln, so that is great news. Thank you. And thank all of y'all.
Thanks, Mr. Gallegos. Any public comment concerning our motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Okay, have I missed anything now? Okay, let's move to announcements. So our announcements are, our pre-agenda and finance workshop is scheduled for December 9th, and our regular board meeting is December 16th. And I think we covered last week that I will not be here on the night. So I would love to be here, but I'm going to have some metal put in my knee. So, okay. So metal on the knee, metal knee in the excuse. Okay. So any other board business? If not, we'll stand adjourned.